But you can take one of these.
Yeah.
There's a place in the meeting.
Are you coming on your property?
Or my cell?
Well, may I ask you? Right, she's moving, but I still feel so.
It's such a good thing.
Yeah, something like that. Um, also.
Yeah, but it's scary and stuff behind you.
Also, because it's much, much sad, like I say, bad enough. The first one B will be.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, approval of minutes. The regular meeting on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, if no objections are registered, the council chair shall approve the same as written. Item three, approval warrants, suggested motion approved and signed warrants, two through five, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Don't move.
Discussion.
There should be two fiscal years worth of warrants.
There is.
As well.
Right.
You should have two tapes there, John.
I only have one.
Here you go. Here's the other.
Thank you. Okay, try this again. Item number three, approval warrants, to approve the sign warrants, two through five, for three hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. And items one twenty-seven through one thirty, for five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents.
Still move.
Gordon. Dan, thank you.
Keep it simple.
Discussion. All in, a roll call. I'm sorry.
We'll do roll call now. Counselor Trust?
Yes.
Counselor Clay?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Summers?
Yes.
Counselor Street?
Yes.
Counselor Hannington?
Yes.
Six zero?
Six zero.
Thank you. Item number four, except gifts, donations, and grants, suggested motion motion approved and except the following gifts, donations, and grants, in the amount of one hundred and ninety dollars, thirty cents, as the below. Why Not Stop and Deli donation of a hundred and thirty dollars to six, ten, twenty-five election meals for the workers. Denise Lynn Moore donation in Nancy Christensen's name, fifty dollars to the library equity intolerance. Can donations of ten dollars and thirty cents to the library. Dan?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Okay. Um, Council Chair Trust?
Yes.
Um, Vice Chair. Uh, Clay?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
And Counselor Summers?
Yes.
Counselor Street?
Yes.
Counselor Hannington?
Yes.
Zero. Chairman, Town Manager's comments. Uh, I'm gonna comment on monthly reports. Do you have anything?
I have a couple. Yes, you wanna go first or second?
Go for it.
Okay. Um, first, I would like to say, just note to you that Ann Morrison is out, uh, at a training event. And so you see, she has brought two of the ladies from the front counter to replace her. So they are here. The other thing is, I don't know that we're gonna do anything about the following, but we are getting complaints from our personnel at the beach, that there are multiple people in town, bringing their children to the beach and leaving them for the day unattended. And at some point, this is gonna become a genuine difficulty. The lifeguard is supposed to be dealing with the people in the water and not the entire beach and playground. I don't have an answer at this time.
I would think with the, uh, we who have the surveillance with the recreation director, you could probably remedy that, because they've got to take up, leave their kids there, but then you'd be double the long babysitting service.
Well, maybe, some may not react well, but. That's just endangerment, right?
You shouldn't be. Yes, sir. This is the rector right there. Step right out. Hey, we've been talking about you.
Um, so something that has been.
So me and the assistant and director down to the waterfront was raising possibly the minimum age to be down there. Um, I think right now it's eight without supervision. Um, yeah. Um, so we were thinking, I think, an age of twelve. I was unsure if that's something that I can do, or if that has to be a council decision.
I would. I would think even signage saying, you know, if we had signage right there saying this would be true. I would think you would be able to do that. I, I wouldn't think there'd be council rule for that, when you're trying to make a safety decision.
Right.
It's not an ordinance, right?
No.
No. That was my question, was I didn't know if it was an ordinance thing or not, so.
Driver's license. No.
Oh, a lot of the kids that are down there, um, lifeguards, the directors and stuff, they come to know who they are and kind of age based off of, um, who their parents are, that type of thing. So they do become known and the ages do get, get out there. Um, probably wouldn't be something that would happen every time, but I think over the course, you know, of a couple of weeks, they'd probably get quite known.
But do we have a sign down there saying this is the beach rules?
We do have a sign. Actually, it was a new one just put up. Um, I'm not sure if the age limit is on that or not.
I didn't see it. Well, I, maybe I just missed it, but.
That one sign is kind of facing angling the, um, boat landing and that entrance to the beach. I do have another sign that I would like to get, um, with some additional beach ru- beach rules, due to some things that has been happening before the lifeguards go on duty at the beginning of summer. Um, so that is something that I could add to that sign.
Sure, sure. I don't see where that needs a council vote. I, I, if it's a safety issue, I think you need to take care of it.
Okay.
And if we could have some signage, I don't know who makes our signs, but, but have a, have a sign made up down there to, that's a safety issue if they leave young children and, and the lifeguards are watching the water and the young children have a chance of getting hurt, so.
All right, I will get with the director and assistant director this week and we'll get that going.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, planning board report?
Amanda isn't here.
I do, but that's the next one on the monthly reports. Oh. Gordon, you wanna sit here? Come on.
I'm giving a report for Amanda tonight. There is no report because the planning board did not.
Thank you. On, uh, monthly reports, um, it was brought to my attention that we immediately had been going out of town with the police department to take care of some things. I've discussed that with the police chief and that was, uh, the town was never left uncovered. So, um, we're all set there. On economic development, um, so far, we've had, been awarded fifteen million dollars in grants and deferred loans. Thank you. Congratulations. With twenty-two million in pending applications. Uh, I think that it's important that the public know that those, those monies are streaming in because of the efforts that are being made. Um, and on another monthly report, on the revaluation. Um. I open this up to the council to, for your comments, because it, if we have properties that we know are valued. And they're only being taxed on the lot. In the monthly report. If they're not being taxed on the building and those, we aren't getting the fair amount of tax as everybody else is paying, I don't think we should wait till the revaluation happens in twenty-eight. If we identify these properties, I think that they need to be. The tax, the tax issue needs to be taken care of immediately. And that they need to stop paying the tax like everybody else does, because I think that's only fair to the citizens that are paying their fair share right now. Uh, my opinion, but I wanna open that up to the council on monthly reports and get your opinion.
I agree with you. If they've been there one or two years.
Absolutely.
I think you misinterpreted books. Excuse me. What I was, what I was saying, what I was saying is that we are reviewing to pick up those properties that aren't on the assessment rolls. What I'm not going to do is the people that are already on the assessment rolls, I'm not going to pick and choose which ones are elevated. I'm gonna let that happen when the revale happens. For instance, the one that I gave it, uh, there's a property that appears out there that is listed, it's measured, it's on the tax rolls. But at today's prices, it would probably sell for four hundred and fifty thousand. It's assessed at about two hundred and eighty. And my statement for that was, I'm not gonna elevate that up. I'm not going to, it's listed, it's listed correctly. So when the revale comes in, that's their point. They're gonna do everybody at once. So instead of going out to these areas that we, I've identified as a problem, I'm not gonna elevate the people that are already listed correctly. I'm going to just pick up the ones that aren't listed.
Can I respond to that directly?
Sure.
My problem is, somebody bought up a piece of land and they cleared it, and that's worth sixty-eight thousand dollars. And somebody, and that person puts a three hundred thousand dollar home on that, but they're not being taxed on that home.
I'm gonna pick that up.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, and that's, right, and that's why I thought you misunderstood what I put in the monthly report.
No, I'm talking about, okay, I know of several properties that have been brought up that are only being taxed on the lot. And se- several properties who have very large structures, and I know we're finding those. I don't think we should wait till two thousand twenty-eight to put those on the tax rolls.
And I a hundred percent agree.
Okay.
But one of the things that was brought to me by the people who have, um, been trying to assist me in finding these properties, is I went out and reviewed the properties on, um, Crooked and Folsom and Part of Upper last week. And when I went out there, I had pretty much seen all of them and listed them, but, but there was six new properties that weren't on the rolls. All of them had permits issued last year that were not complete. However, after I went out and I was sure, because I'd been to these properties and measured them, they brought in that list. And on that list, when I checked the assessment, what I had done did not, for some reason, save on the screen. So this is what helps, because it was assessed. I have the card, I have the everything. So it was just a matter of adding that value in. So, in essence, concerned citizens are actually helping me catch errors that I didn't see. It wasn't a matter of that we didn't have them assessed. It was like when I put it on, it was like the year we had the homesteads where we added new homesteads and about, I think that year twenty of them didn't come through after they were added. Sometimes there's computer glitches, sometimes it's my data entry, I don't hit save at the end of it. But these people who are bringing their concerns to me are actually helping me do my job better.
I, I think that's wonderful, because that's, that's gonna make it fairer for everybody involved.
Agreed.
I put two, two on your desk there last week when.
Was that you?
That was me.
Yeah, that, those were the errors I, I, I was like, I have these, I know I do, and I went and got the card and it's like, but they're not on the computer.
But you could see what, what the issue was.
I can, and like I said, you're helping me do a better job, so.
I think that's terrific.
Those people who are bringing that information to me, thank you.
Yeah, if we all work together, we can get this fixed, but it's, it's just when people are paying top dollar on their taxes and the fellow next door's got a three hundred thousand dollar home and he's not. I don't blame people for, but I'm glad that people are working with us and it's helping, and we're gonna continue doing that. I don't know how you could ever expect it to be done by July, but I don't think, I think it'll be September before you're done doing this project.
Well, put it this way, I'm gonna put a cutoff date so I can get tax bills out, and if we find more, we'll supplement them.
Okay.
Okay, but the intent is to get, find all these properties, and all I can say to the residents who've stepped up to say, hey, look, you're missing, you haven't done this, thank you.
Yeah, well, and, and I don't know that, that, that you go back taxes for five or six years.
I can go back three.
Okay, I think that that is something that the citizens would actually demand if they had that.
Sure.
Option.
Yep.
Um, I'm not trying to hurt anybody, Ruth, I'm really not.
Well, I'm not trying to unfairly tax anybody either. So, you know, the intent is, is to find these properties and make these corrections.
But if you're, if you're sitting in a three hundred thousand dollar home and a seventy thousand dollar lot, and you're paying a thousand dollars a year for tax.
It's not right.
It's a problem.
It is.
So, let's all just suck it up. We gotta pay our fair share and we'll go from there.
Now, I'm gonna go back to my seat and try to step on Kathy's toes again.
Step hard. Step hard.
Now, Mr. Chairman, speaking of that, and I don't want to say heel of anybody, now.
I haven't been on the council for a few years, but didn't we hire a part-time person to, supposed to help the assessing office?
We do have that person who's working in the assessing office and other places, absolutely.
So, so was that helping?
That, that person's been out with, with Ruth, out on the Folsom Pond and out on Crooked, was out there.
Okay.
When they were looking, yes.
All right, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else for monthly reports? Open forum, anybody for open? Step right out.
I drive and miss it. So.
I didn't.
I'm Stacy and I live on Folsom. So, um, it's my understanding that economic development is a full-time position, and it's also my understanding that the tax assessor is a full-time position. And if we take Ruth off of the economic development, where she's got all these grants and things coming in, is that gonna be detrimental to the project? So should we look at a temporary contract service to assist her so that we really have enough help so that she's not killing herself doing two full-time jobs?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, that would be your answer.
In fact, if we have that, we had hired for the last two years, Eastern Main Development Corporation, to provide us a person who knew better about grants than we know, and Vicki Rustville, and she did a good job. However, she became fatigued with Eastern Main Development Corporation, and she ceased being their employee last month, and she is now a contractor to us, as was Eastern Main Development Corporation. We're not using Eastern Main Development Corporation for that at this time, and she is working for the exact same price for us as she had been working for E M D C, but she is working for us on a near full-time basis.
I, I was just, I was just teasing.
Oh, good.
He had the answer.
That won't even affect the budget then, and, and Ruth can just do one job. Great, thank you.
Well, Ruth's doing two jobs still. She's still doing two jobs. Yes, ma'am. Step right out.
I don't know, my foot's broken.
That's Ruth's fault, not us.
Kathy Wason, any word on the audit?
Better to have Melissa answer that if she will.
We have the draft audit. Um, they are just waiting for Rick and I. We need to answer a series of questions. What do they call it?
The yellow book questions. Well, I have not seen the format which I'm going to answer.
I, I received it today.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, we have to answer these questions, and once that is done, they're complete. So.
And we will have access to the.
Yes, yes. We already have access to the draft. I could send the draft to the council if they would like. Um.
But the draft may be changed with.
The draft may be changed.
I would wait for the yellow book to be done. The yellow book is a standard thing that happens in municipal audits, and, uh, it did not happen with us for a few years running, because of the auditor we had. Now that we have an auditor who does things more what I'll call the normal way, that has now happened.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't wanna put something half, I don't know, there, and then have changes made.
And it is possible for it to be changed, but everybody with both the audit firm and the pre-audit firm has reviewed it, and they have sent me the paperwork to do the yellow book.
Counsel, do you disagree with that?
No, now we'll bring all the, all the audits up to date, correct?
No.
No.
How many we still, that, was that twenty-three?
This is twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
They're already working on twenty-two. They've already started that, and then, I hope, we're gonna knock on wood that they all go much faster now that they understand our processes and our account structure. That was the biggest hurdle with this, is because they're from out of state, they needed to learn everything on how we do everything. There must have been three hundred questions that we've answered over the course of the months. It, and we sent down probably fifty percent of all of our invoices to them as well. They just really, they, they needed to get to know how we do things.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
I would second what Melissa has just said. They needed to learn how some things work in Maine. Some of the questions they had were simply Maine questions that they didn't know. On the other hand, they are, and I may not have paid as much attention to this as I would like to have, they are a forensic auditor, and I told them right up front, we don't need a forensic audit, but it appears we're pretty much getting them.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Matthew Wamboldt. Um, I just wanna say, I grew up in this town, and I, one of the things I noticed when I came back visiting is that I think it's a real disservice where we decided to put the new Gary Gordon statue. Um, I heard conflicting stories. I spoke to, I guess, Miss Hannington's wife on the phone, I spoke to Mr. Bronson, I spoke to the people that run the Gary Gordon, uh, Veteran Center down by the laundromat, heard conflicting stories from the three groups. And, you know, Mr. Gordon was, you know, really an honor for this town. Not much comes out of Lincoln that's really, you know, notable, uh, you know, has that type of notoriety. More, uh, you know, Medal of Honor winner. I lived in Tempe, Arizona for years. I mean, they celebrate Pat Tillman like he's the second coming of Christ, and, you know, unfortunately, that man was killed by friendly fire. Great man, but just because he was in the NFL, they celebrate that guy, and I feel like, you know, we got the bridge on Chester, but hiding that statue back by Anafford, I mean, if I didn't, wasn't pointed in that direction, I never would have known it was there. I mean, I feel that that should be where that loon is. I mean, honoring that man in a way that this town, I feel like is really falling short, um, I think is a shame. And so just, again, somebody grew up here, coming in from out of town, I feel like somehow we really dropped the ball in honoring that man and his family.
Thank you. And I, I agree with you. I would like to see that in a, a more prevalent place, absolutely.
Is there any options or ability to do that?
We haven't, that hasn't been brought to the council, so if it is brought to the council, we'll absolutely address it.
Who would bring it to the council? Member?
Would be a council member or, uh, the town manager, yes.
May I respond, Mr.?
Absolutely.
Uh, this whole process, the reason why it's down now, uh, the V F W didn't have nothing to do with it, American Legion didn't have nothing to do with it, the town didn't have nothing to do with it. It was basically the Gary Gordon Trust, and they ran with it. And if you remember correctly, when my sister was on the council, she wanted to have a veterans park down there, have everything housed. But I can tell you right now, the scuttlebug been the last couple of years, they'd like to see it right in Veteran Square, right out here.
Sure, yeah.
And I, I don't know how much it would cost to move something like that, if we'd have to go for donations to have that done. I, I do know that that was several hundred thousand dollars to put it there. So, I mean, it could cost probably a hundred thousand to move it, if you could move it. Because we sunk out in the ground at least five feet, the pad itself. So I, you know, you probably could lift the statue off there and relocate it, like we did the, um, the doughboy right down here. That used to be facing this way, towards the Civil War, so when Ramsey did the work, and when they put it back on the mount, they faced it down West Broadway. So, I mean, that probably could be an option in the future, but I do know the people that I've talked to, they'd like to see it right out here.
So it was Gary Gordon's Trust was the one who really spearheaded the.
Basically, yeah, and I can talk to Gary B's because he was on it and, you know.
I mean, just as, again, somebody grew up here, coming in outside, I was with the new documentary that did the leaks about that.
Yeah. Yeah, no. Well, thank.
I think we just have to go through the process and see what the cost would be to do it, and, and see if there would be somewhere in Veteran Square that we could put that in, without damaging it, moving it, because it was so hard to get it yet. Uh, you know, that, that would be.
Cause I do know at the time, before we erected it down there, even, uh, Betty Gordon, the mother, um, suggested that we ought to put it where the loon was or Veteran Square, because they ran with it. And they had an idea of making a park, and, you know, Sharon was a big force on that, and so, but we could, we could look into that for sure, you know.
I think it'd be great for the town.
You know.
I wouldn't have any problem with it being Veteran Square. I absolutely wouldn't.
I mean, we'd have to, we'd lose three or four places, parks, farms, though, that maybe, you know.
Well, you know, but it is where he is, he's positioned, looking right at where he's buried.
Yeah.
So, that was, that was part of why it was put in that position. He's looking, he's looking right at where he is buried in Lincoln Cemetery.
Right on.
So, you know, that's, that would be, I guess, that would take a, a lot of conversation with the family before they'd wanna. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and they, and they would be the driving force to tell us what they thought would be okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum? Mr. Dwelling?
Charlie Dwelling. Um, I talked to Stu Jacobs about the pilots building at the airport and went and looked at it with Key Strange. We thought we might be able to lift that and just move it, the slabs in three pieces, so it'd be probably more work than the buildings were.
Just wouldn't be cost effective.
I don't think so. You'd have to dig and get I-beams under it.
But thank you for trying, so appreciate it. Were you able to speak with, with Dennis on that other issue?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else for open forum? Item nine A, public hearing, fireworks, your ordinance, use ordinance change. Suggested motion, move to open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing oral and written comments on the proposed ordinance change to the fireworks use ordinance, twenty-one, two point four point one as attached. No, this is, this change is to fix the times listed in the section to reflect midnight, twelve A M versus twelve P M, as listed in the ordinance currently. Gordon, roll call?
Council Chair Trust?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clay?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Summers?
Yes.
Counselor Street?
Yes.
Counselor Hannington?
Yes.
Vote six zero, we're in at seven twenty-seven. Does anybody have a problem with changing twelve P M to twelve A M? Anyone? Not a lot of people. Okay. We're out at seven twenty-eight. Nine B, approval ordinance change, fireworks use ordinance change, move to approve the fireworks use ordinance change as attached. Nine B, approval ordinance change fireworks, use ordinance change, move to approve the fireworks use ordinance change as attached. Gordon? Dan? Roll call?
Counsel, uh, Council Chair Trass.
Yes.
Vice Chair, uh, Counsel Clay.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland. Counselor McCarthy. Oh, he's not here, sorry. Counselor Summers. Counselor Street. Counselor Hanington.
Yes. Six zero. Item number ten, approved renewal of a state liquor license application, Jato Highlands Golf Course. This business has been in operation for more than five years and does not require public hearing. Suggested motion, move to approve the renewal state liquor license application submitted by Jato Highlands Golf Course. Marcella? Dan, roll call?
Council Chair Trass.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clay.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland. Counselor Summers. Counselor Street. Counselor Hanington.
Yes. Six zero. Item twelve A, accept forfeiture upon suggested motion, move to accept three thousand four hundred and five dollars in U S currency. Was seized in a criminal investigation, C R dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four sixty-three. And is to be forfeited to the town of Lincoln in accordance with fifteen M R S A subsection fifty-eight twenty-four three. And subsection fifty-eight twenty-six six and remitting fifteen percent, five hundred and ten dollars and seventy-five cents. To the District Attorney's Office for their assistance in the case. I didn't, but I'm going back to it after this one. Marcella? Gordon, roll call?
Uh, Council Chair Trass.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clay.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland. Counselor Summers. Counselor Street. Counselor Hanington.
Yes. That's a six zero. Okay, usually Steve keeps me in line, I don't skip right over. Yeah. So we'll go back to item eleven, discussion for state forestry management. Uh, Amanda's not here.
Not here.
But I, I spoke with the district forest ranger and in our workshop last week, Amanda told us that program was going away. That program is going away. It's going to be, we, right now, we have three options. And we can, uh, choose which option to have state forestry assist us as long as we're doing the state forestry standards. But I think the council needs to choose one of those three options. Problem is, they had so long to meet their quota of towns involved in this program and they've met it. So within the next two years, this is gonna be forced on us no matter what. That's right, that's right. There's not gonna be any options. When they say, hey, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. They'll do it their way. Right now, there's an option. I don't have the paperwork in front of me. I know Amanda has the paperwork. There's an option that forestry does the whole thing. But we stay with those standards. Uh, as far as timber harvesting, not campers on the lakes, not EPA stop. As far as, it's, it's timber harvesting. And like if someone buys a lot and cut right to the, the water and there's a hundred foot setback, forestry would deal with the timber part of that. But as far as having six or eight campers on one lot, forestry's not gonna deal with that. That's still gonna be us. But at least forestry would help in that regard. So the three options and one is forestry does all of it. Second one is that, um, we work with forestry and, and we do most of it, but forestry assists us. And the other, the third alternative escapes me, but the three options right now as to what we can do. I think that needs to go before the council and they need to review what we have for the present law. Because eventually. In a minute. Eventually, we're gonna have this force upon us. We don't. But we voted on this. We voted to accept these standards. And I don't, the first time I mentioned, anyone mentioned options to me was when I talked to the district ranger, Richie Happen. So, but I think that needs to be another, another vote by the council. This is already passed, but the paperwork apparently didn't make it to Augusta or Augusta lost the paperwork or something. Cause every time Mr. Happen would have a complaint, he'd say, we haven't been told that we are working in Lincoln. So we're not on that list. That's, that's our problem. I'd say we can have that paperwork next month and be working on it. Mrs. Moise, would you like to speak?
I was just gonna point out that we did vote as a council. The planning board voted and the council voted in twenty twenty-one and the paperwork never made it to our desk.
That's, that's the problem.
So it was voted and we accepted the most stringent option, which was the number one that you just gave, that they were handled.
But the council voted that.
The council voted.
But seeing as that didn't make it to Augusta, I believe we should take another vote and have a fresh vote before the other, one of the other options are forced on us. Because that's, that's going to happen. Cause they've met a threshold for that program. Can we have that as an agenda item for next?
For August, yes, you can.
And can we have that paperwork with the options so the council can review that before they?
I would think so.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, if that paperwork was off with that four years ago, we would have had a. With the other towns or just to move point.
The, the, what it is, is forestry would step in and help us with our, with our timber harvesting, with, with harvesting timber around the lakes. With bernal pools and, and with filling in stream beds and all that, good stuff. That kind of frees up our code enforcement to be doing code enforcement stuff as far as eighteen campers on one lot with no sewage. So, you know, those are, those are things that, that I think we can take all the help we can get. And the council, as Ms. Moise said, the council did vote for it to happen. Paperwork never made it to us. So, but I think we ought to take a fresh vote on that and make sure that they know we're, we're on board to working with the state with forestry and, you know. Anyone else? Anyone else? Mr. Dwelly?
I guess I'll address this maybe to Ruth where Amanda's not here. When you're going around looking at the properties and there's a camper room.
Oh, yes, we got a list.
Well, I'm noticing a lot more green slime and Folsom.
Like yesterday?
It's, it's bad, I'm not sure.
Awful.
In my past experience, a lot of that storage leaking in.
We have a couple places that Amanda is gonna follow up on.
I know there's some campers that I have seen. I think a lot of them don't have septic, they're just stuck in the ground, but. I just thought I'd throw it out there and maybe if you're going around anyway.
Oh, yeah, we saw.
The last three years and.
And there is a lot.
It's quite bad.
Yeah, there's one with, there's one with three right across from Mr. Dwelly. There's one with three campers on it with no. He has septic, but three campers?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, we didn't know that.
But there are other violations we found.
They're gonna come see you, Mr. Dwelly.
We didn't find any violations on Charles.
There's no dilations on damn road, except the guy from out of state. Any more discussion on the state forestry management standards? We'll have that on the agenda for the council next month. We'll skip twelve A, Gordon, if that's okay. Get what you wish for. Uh, twelve B, accept forfeiture funds, suggested motion, move to accept six hundred and forty-three dollars in U S currency. That was seized in a criminal investigation, C R twenty-three dash three zero three five zero. And is to be forfeited to the town of Lincoln in accordance with fifteen M R S A subsection fifty-eight twenty-four three and fifty-eight twenty-six six. And remitting fifteen percent, ninety-six point forty-five cents to the District Attorney's Office for their assistance in the case. Marcella, Dan, roll call?
Council Chair Trass.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clay.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland. Counselor Summers. Counselor Street. Counselor Hanington.
Yes. Six zero. Item thirteen, appoint member, suggested motion, move to appoint. Town councillor to the TIF committee. Who's just itching to be on the TIF committee? Rock it all night. It's not heavy left at all, Gordon. You're in there. Oh, any, anyone else wanna take Gordon on for that position?
We got a primarium.
Move to appoint Gordon Street, town councillor to the TIF committee. Marcella? Dan? Roll call?
Council Chair Trass.
Absolutely.
Vice Chair Clay. Counselor Ireland. Counselor Summers. Counselor Street. Can he, can he vote?
He can, but I think he's gonna be biased. Go ahead, Gordon, you in?
Yeah.
Six zero.
Okay.
We're not paying him anything extra to do this, so he's okay. Item fourteen, approve and sign revaluation contracts, suggested motion, move to approve and sign the revaluation contract. With R S C Assessment Services in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. With the work to begin the spring of two thousand twenty-six. Initial fee to bind the contract is thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars due in August twenty of twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. Funds to come from the revaluation capital account and we've already set that aside. Dan? Marcella, roll call?
Council Chair Trass.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clay.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland. Counselor Summers. Counselor Street. Counselor Hanington.
Yes. Six zero. Item fifteen, approved closure for September Fest. Suggested motion, move to approve closing Prince Thomas Park Veterans Memorial and Square for September, on September sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Dan? Roll call?
Council Chair Trass.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clay.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland. Counselor Summers. Counselor Street. Counselor Hanington.
Yes. Six zero. Item sixteen, approved vendor fees for September Fest. Move to approve charging five dollars for artisans and one hundred dollars for non-Lincoln business food vendors. For September Fest and fifty dollars for Lincoln business food vendors. Gordon? Dan? Discussion? Roll call?
Council Chair Trass.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clay.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland. Counselor Summers. Counselor Street. Counselor Hanington.
Yes. Six zero. Future agenda items would be the main forestry standards for next month. And have, uh, make sure we have the options so we can review that before the. Meeting. But future agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, I know last week I mentioned maybe trying to move the, uh, the parade and the fireworks to fall for July next year. Being one of the fiftieth anniversary. I'm thinking maybe four o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, but I'd like to have it on the agenda so we could at least start having that conversation, see what the interest would be.
We can put that on the agenda, absolutely. Anyone else with future agenda items? Are we, do we need the executive?
We do not have a use for it tonight.
Move to adjourn the meeting at. Seven forty-three P M. Gordon? Dan? Roll call?
Council Chair Trass.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clay. Counselor Ireland. Counselor Summers. Counselor Street. Counselor Hanington.
Yes. Six zero, thank you everyone.